Well, good evening. Talk about getting quiet real quick. We must have, the bell must have tolled. So if everyone, before we get started, maybe wants to slide on in on the sides, because I know the color guard will be using the center aisle here. So we can make sure we have them plenty of room. And I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for the public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified on the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight's meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
All right, before we get started, I just set the stage for something, to something that miraculously happens about every 12 months in these chambers. It is the change of the guard, as we call it, and then it is the, every two years, it's the council. It's filled with pomp and circumstance, and it's an honor to be a part of this. It's an honor to be a part of the diocese up here, and we want to do this in a manner to uphold the tradition. So with that, our invocation this evening will be given by Chris Kirsting, who's the pastor of St. Andrew's Presbyterian Church. That will be followed by the presentation of the colors by our police department, and then that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance, which tonight, the pledge will be led by Gilbert Hillary, who is a Vietnam combat veteran who served from 1968 to 1969 in the 199th Light Infantry, and he's one of our hometown heroes. So if you would stand and remain standing for all of those. And just for the record, I'm retired. I used to be, I used to be the pastor of St. Andrew, but now I'm retired. Let's all pray together. Lord God, we are so grateful that we can be here this evening to, to celebrate democracy, to celebrate the fact that we have the right to vote and elect people to serve and to lead us. We thank you for that. We thank you for the nation that we live in, for the freedom we have in our nation. We pray that you would protect our military, that help preserve our freedom, that you would protect also our first responders, who are there to stand ready to help us in times of need. We ask you tonight, Lord, to bless this city council. Thank you for the leadership that they bring to our community. We pray you'll continue to grant them wisdom and compassion as they lead and make vital decisions. And we thank you tonight especially for Wade Kirchner, as he begins his term as mayor. Thank you for his willingness to serve. We ask you to bless him, strengthen him as he leads, and grant him an extra measure of wisdom that will allow him to lead this council and our community as mayor. And as we pray for our own community, Lord, we pray for our world, pray for so many places that need peace. We pray that that peace might come, that we could have peace in the world, and in our community, in our families, and in our homes. All these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We will move to the agenda approval and any modification. Please note, the staff has provided an updated resolution for item number four, including the certified election results from Sutter County, and printed copies are available in the lobby, and this information is also available on our website. Is there any modifications to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, agenda stands. We'll move on to agenda item one, which is appearance of interested citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not on tonight's agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do have one card tonight, and that is Tony Farley. If you would please come up to the microphone back there and give us your name and address, if you would, please, and you have three minutes.
Hey. Helloz. Test, test, test. Still works?
Yes.
This is Tony Farley from South Uciti Falls Drive, and also living at House Wilkood Drive. I have a top part on the new mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for your service, also the armed guard, the fire department, name of my sheriff partner, also thanks Grace for serving the city council. Thank you. Appreciate it. New C Hall, this mean.
All righty, thank you. Is there any other comments from the public this evening? Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the business of the city. And the first item is a presentation to outgoing council member, Ms. Esmondola. Ms. Esmondola, will you join me down front, please? Grace, it's been four, four years that we've all been hard at work and reading this proclamation. Didn't really realize it until I went through the proclamation, all the stuff that this council's been hard at work for. So, all of us together.
Just wanted to make sure of the proclamation.
So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and it's Grace Esmondola, City Council 2018 to 2022. Whereas Grace Esmondola was the first Mexican-American elected to the city council in 2018 and has served our community with enthusiasm and heart for the past four years. Therefore, it is right and appropriate that her personal contributions be recognized, including serving on numerous boards and commissions, including the Gilizer Drainage District, School District Liaison, Sutter Animal Services Authority, Northern Sacramento Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group, boy, that's a mouthful, Regional Water Authority, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation, Yuba City Sutter County Homeless Advisory Ad Hoc Committee, Bye County Homeless JPA, Feather River Air Quality Management District, and Countywide RDA Oversight Board. And whereas Grace's dedication to addressing homelessness in our community by serving on the Bye County Homeless Authority, supporting the funding for two homeless liaison officers, along with serving on the Joint Homeless Ad Hoc Committee with Sutter County, has made a positive impact on the quality of life for many of our, in our community. And whereas, the city council of the city of Yuba City priorities are public safety, physical stability, infrastructure, and to be business friendly. Accomplishments include, but are not limited to, an ongoing commitment to maintaining a system of transparency, public engagement and collaboration, forming ad hoc committees to address the issues of homelessness, CDBG, budget, and Boog Stewart Master Plan and sphere of influence expansion with annexation, hosting community workshops on the topics of transportation, water and wastewater, homelessness, budget and priorities, development impact fees and the harder specific plan, accordingly increasing city staff, staffing and salary increases for all employees and the appointment of a new city manager. And whereas, many projects and developments occurred during the, during her seat on the council, such as addressing the Cowper's unfunded liability, new pickleball and bocce ball courts, because I know you play pickleball, purchasing a new Linco armored Bearcat vehicle, Feather River Parkway improvements, purchasing a new ladder truck and fire engine, the completion of the Fifth Street Bridge, and the development of DRS Baines Park. There's more. That's why I said there was a lot.
Bearcat vehicle, like it. Pickleball Bearcat.
All right. Whereas, due to her concern and dedication for funding solutions for water supplies, I know that was near and dear to your heart for the region, Grace continued, or Grace coordinated a tour with staff, city council, and state water resources control board chair Esquivel and vice chair Di Amano, I said it correctly, okay, of the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment facility to discuss funding needs, coordinated with staff on a DWR 6.325 million drought relief grant for an Aqua4 Storage Recovery System and a DWR $977,700 grant for two trash capture projects. And served on the Association of California Water Agencies Region Two Board. She also advocated for providing information in multiple languages, whether it be in the city forums or social media postings. Her support during COVID was extraordinary for the safety of the community and the staff. And whereas, in furtherance of her priorities, Grace strived to acknowledge the hardworking women at the city and in the community. Recognition included a Women's Breakfast for city staff, Women's Month proclamation, and the highlighting of different women leaders in the community via social media. And whereas, Grace is also eager to celebrate the continued success and growth of our vibrant community, during her tenure as a council member, Grace Esmondola has actively participated in countless ribbon cuttings and recognized the anniversaries and successes of local businesses throughout the Yuba Sutter area. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, mayor of the city of Yuba City, do hereby recognize council member Grace Esmondola for her commitment to the Yuba, to the city of Yuba City. We all, we hereby urge all residents to join us in recognizing Grace for her countless contributions to our community and wish her all the best in the future, done this sixth day, December 2022, city of Yuba City, county of Sutter, and state of California. And on behalf of the city, the staff, the council, there's flowers and a gift for you as well. I know that Congressman Guaramendi has also awarded you one, but I want to bring up Brayden right now for something special.
How's it going, everybody? My name is, hey, my name is Brayden Pisani. I'm here on behalf of Assemblyman Gallagher and also Senator Jim Nielsen, and we just wanted to congratulate you, Grace, on your time on the city council, and I have a proclamation from the state of California for you as well. In recognition of your tenure on the city council for the city of Yuba City, for your dedicated service to the community through your work on education, homeless, transit, and animal care issues, thank you for your leadership and your commitment to the city of Yuba City and the entire North State. And James wanted me to just pass along to you that, you know, public service, it's a sacrifice, and it's, it's, everyone should be thanking you for the time that you served on the city council. So congratulations and thank you for your time.
All right. I told you, yep, I told you we had done a lot over four years. And Grace, thank you again, and like to give you the opportunity to address the city.
I really appreciate it. I mean, the, the, I, I, I'm not dying, so I appreciate the fact that there's a lot of flowers and awards. It's just a four-year term at this point, so life is not over, ladies and gentlemen. I am truly, truly appreciative of all your wonderful love and generosity and, you know, some mudslinging along the way. It happens, it's politics. And so got some words that I wrote down to share with all of you, because I think that being part of this community is just, it's just a blessing. It is really a blessing. And, and so I, I thought about this long and hard, because part of the thing that my parents, and I always go back to my parents, I always go back to the legacy of the work. And that is important to, to me as a human being, to be able to say, I'm doing this in community, and I'm doing this for my family, and I'm doing this for the community, all of us together. Some people don't appreciate that, and you know what? It is what it is at this point, but we can do better. I just know as a community, we can do better, and we will. Just a few things we've done in the last four years, and some of the things that I've done on my own have worked out. So I'm going to share a little bit of my thoughts, and maybe you may like some of it, and maybe you might not, but guess what? You got to listen, because I got the microphone. Right? Yeah, there we go. So I begin tonight by honoring my family's legacy. It is truly important for me as immigrant parents, my brother, his family, my nieces, nephews, uncles, aunts, cousins, if you're a Mexican, East Indian family, you got to thank the whole family. And my dear, dear friends who are close to me like family, there are many of you in this room. And I'm so proud to be surrounded by individuals truly, truly who love me, who challenge me, who support me, and when I need something, help me. You can't do this alone. So thank you, thank you so much. As the first, thank you, day first acknowledging, one thing that I can do on my own is be the first Mexican-American immigrant woman elected to the Yuba City Council. In 2018, this occurred, and for the past four years, a dream came true to me by serving. To break the glass ceiling, not just once, but many times over, as the first in many roles in business, community, committees, orgs, and as a community leader, it gives me great hope that I know I won't be the last, because I know I won't be the last. My purpose is to help people. My beliefs are to be authentic, open to the process, build relationships one-on-one in a group or a community. Here's a strong one for all of us, have integrity, be positive, a positive role model, lead alongside others, and implement desired outcomes. The ingredients aren't a secret, it happens all the time. This work is rewarding, at the same time, it's really challenging. It is very challenging. Because there's this thing in the middle of it all called politics, right? So you see, there are many facets to politics. I have firsthand experience with this. It can be so ego-centered. It can be untrueful. It can be brutal. It could be demanding, it could be selfish, and guess what? It can be vindictive. People have things on you, they want to resolve, it can be unethical. And guess what? It's a win-lose game. You haven't figured that out? It's a win-lose game. Now, why would anyone enter this arena? Right? It sounds so appealing. Right? It sounds really appealing. The simple answer is for some, it's just to win. That's it. Got to win. My answer is to bring a voice that offer a different perspective and stay grounded and committed to my principles, values, and focus on the opportunities and create inclusive and diverse environment. The institution of politics is rooted in a win-lose game. Although I'm disappointed I lost, can't hide that, for me, each challenge becomes the next opportunity. As I leave as the first Mexican-American immigrant woman elected to Yuba City Council, with all my accomplishments, me, me, me at this moment, ego-driven, I have to say that I thank Assemblymember Gallagher, Jim, James, whatever we're calling each other today, John Guaramendi, and the city for the resolutions. They were wonderful, and I appreciate them. As a servant leader, I have acted on my best to commit to my principles, partner, collaborate, and work with many, many, many people. As a result, we have successfully adopted, implemented, and in the queue, many projects, plans, and outcomes that will bear fruit in the near future and for many years to come. I sincerely thank the city staff, there's many of you, and I love a lot of you, and I like some, and, well, okay. And the executive team, I really, really think we have an amazing executive team. And Juan, Shannon, Diana, best decision to hire Diana, city manager. Also, also, I want to kind of carry on from your words of faith. Also, I wish the new council to have more profound wisdom. You brought that in. Listen closely, see if they take the advice. Serve all communities, be inclusive and diverse with your leadership and decisions. I appreciate every person who has provided direct or indirect support in so many ways. I am so proud of my work and my commitment to bring a positive message and holding a clean campaign. Clean campaigns are hard to do, because, remember, we're in politics. This is the legacy I leave with the city, knowing I made a positive impact, and that my parents, again, my legacy are my parents, that my parents are proud of my work, which for me personally means a lot. Having dedicated my life to serving the community and proving when and whatever possible way, I wholeheartedly thank you for continuing to make my mission, and guess what? My passion, a reality. This is not a goodbye, this is until next time, and guess what? I think you all are all wonderful, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and God bless you all, and God bless the USA. Thank you so much.
Again, Councilmember Esmondola, thank you for four years of hard work, and reiterate it, you've done some great things since you've been here, so thank you for your service. With that, we will move to agenda item three, and Mr. Vice Mayor, it tells me you're up for this one.
Yeah. Is this thing on? Here we go. Oh, boy, this is going to take a minute. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It has been truly a, an honor to work besides Dave as, as his vice mayor. We had, we have a mutual friend that when I chose to run, she said, you know what? I think you need to go take the time to meet with these folks you might be working with. And so I did that, and, and there was one person left, and it was you, and it, it took me a while to get around to it, but I did. And when I sat down with Dave, it was, it was, it was tough. It was, it was everything like a job interview. But what that, what that spoke to me was how serious he was about the position and how important the right candidate was. And so, so thank you for that. It took me a while to figure that one out. Thank you. For those of you that don't know Dave, he's a father, he's a husband, he has a extremely successful business here in Yuba City, and somehow, he found time to be the mayor and do it well, and do it well. I don't, Dave, I don't think you sleep. So having said that, I've got something for you here real quick. This does go on. Dave Shaw, mayor 2021 to 2022. Whereas, after being elected to the city council in 2018 and serving honorably as a council member for three years, Dave Shaw further dedicated himself to the community by serving as mayor of the city of Yuba City from 2021 to 2022. Given his contributions to the city during this time and his continued commitment to public service, it is right and appropriate that this personal contrib, that, that, that his contrib, personal contributions be recognized, including serving on the city selection committee, BO Military Liaison, Gilizer Drainage District, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, Intergovernmental Relations Committee, Master Tax Exchange Agreement, and Public Safety Ad Hoc Committee, Committees, Regional Waste Management Authority, Yuba Sutter Economic Corporation, Yuba Sutter Transit Authority, and in addition, created a homeless task force and business task force. And whereas, the city council of the city of Yuba City prioritize includes, priorities include enhancing the quality of life for residents through public safety, fiscal responsibility, infrastructure, and being business friendly. Accomplishments in 2021, 2022 include, but are not limited to, additional staffing for code enforcement, fire department, police department, public works, finance, human resources, and development services. An ongoing commitment to maintain a system of transparency, public engagement, and cooperation. Numerous grants were applied and awarded to the city for water, sewer, streets, police, and fire. Forming an ad hoc committee to address the issues of homelessness, hosting several community workshops, and the topics of homelessness and senior low-income housing development along with budget and priorities. And whereas, during his time as mayor, the series, the city coordinated the annexation of 800 and, 813 acres into the city limits, increasing its size by nearly 11%. Partnered with the housing authority to help bring 176 units of low-income housing, awarded, awarded the 10 million Bridge Street whitening project, accepted a 6.35 million DWR, DWR grant for Aqua Fire, Aqua for Storage Recovery Well, a $2 million grant for the, for the Plumas Corridor, 158,000 for F, is that frac, fragment, for EV charges, accepted a safer grant for, for firefighters, and it collected 500, excuse me, 48, try that one more time, $58,179 through state intercept program, and... This is what it was like last year, right? Okay, all right. Whereas, many projects and developments occurred in 2021, 2022, such as upgraded Sam Brandon pickleball courts, paved the Feather River Parkway, completed the WWTF three-point discharge 2022 residential resurfacing project, completed the 90% design of the WWTF Outfall, Outfall Diffuser Project, implemented a payment plan program for delinquency balances, replaced security cameras at the Corporation Yard and Gauche Aquatic Park, replaced mobile video and police cars, implemented Goinkvest? Is that right? Is that right? GoInVest? Okay, GoInVest payroll. Budgeting software, ClearGov, budgeting software, DataBook, GSSB eighty-seven, and debt management software, ESO, new records management software, purchased new handheld radios for fire, completion of Station One remodel, police department renovations, the purchase of the Lenko Bearcat armored vehicle, implement, implementation of the Feathers to Farm Program, created the city's first urban forest master plan, adopted the emergency operators plan, and initiated construction of the DRS Veins Park. And whereas Major, the Mayor Shaw participated in many community events, to just name a few, such as riding in the cattle drive. I still can't believe you do that. That's amazing. Down Bridge Street, the Fourth July Children's Parade, attending the Veterans Stand Down, picking up trash on cleanup day, and also with Say Love, even the Mayor's Bus Tour, making a connection with groups of committee, community members touring the upcoming developments within Yuba City and endorsing the Blue Zone Project. And whereas, awards received during the 2021, 2022 term include the GFPA Distinguished Certificate of Achievement of Ex-, for Excellence in Financial Reporting, redesignation as a Tree City USA Community, and the SDRMA Presidential Award. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the City Council of the City of Yuba City, do hereby extend our appreciation and commend Dave Shaw for his dedication and outstanding performance as the Mayor of the City of Yuba City. We hereby, hereby urge all residents to join us in recognizing Dave for his contributions and outgoing dedic-, ongoing dedication to our community. Done this sixth day of December, 2022, City of Yuba City, County of Sutter, and the State of California.
How's it going? Again, I'm Braden Pisani. I'm with Assemblyman Gallagher's office and also Senator Jim Nielsen tonight. And we just wanted to congratulate you on your time as mayor and recognize you for your dedicated service to the community through your work on economic development, homelessness, and education issues facing the city. Thank you for your continued leadership and commitment to the City of Yuba City and its residents. And I know you're going to keep working hard. The City of Yuba City has been super proactive in getting projects done, improving city government for everybody. And, you know, our, our office has taken notice, and Assemblyman Gallagher is very proud to call Yuba City his home as well. So, thank you and congratulations.
I've got a lot of people to thank tonight, but before I sit down and talk about that, there's a few people that I really want to thank, and I may get emotional on this one because everyone knows that you never go into anything alone. And by, behind every person that has a spouse is really the rock and the glue that keeps it together. So, my wife will come up. Thank you for putting up all the, as, as Mark said last year, the late-night phone calls, and as she termed it years ago, a Dave delay, when I would leave in the mornings at seven, seven-fifteen, heading to Starbucks and on my way to the office, and she would beat me because I would get there at eight-thirty. So, you're... Not Mark's fault. But honey, you, you carry us. You've carried the office a lot this year to allow me to be loaned to the city, and I want to say thank you, and I love you. And, no, stay here, stay here. I'm not done yet. There's three people that's really special to me because, to me, the first thing that my grandfather instilled to me was family. So I'd like both my daughters to come up, and they're both going, oh, God, please come up. You guys have gone through a lot over four years, especially this last year with, with Dad being on loan to the city more than any of the other three, and I just want to let you know that I love you and thank you guys. All right, wow. When I started this a year ago, I started with four simple words that I think hold true because it's, it's at the core of everything, and that's integrity, character, humility, and servitude. And while that proclamation was quite lengthy, I can tell you that I got to be a part of that because of this great council, and more importantly, because of our great team at the city. Because the men and women of this city, our executive team, and the employees that I call a team, that's what propels the city. We just get the honor of being along for the ride. So I would like to start this with a round of applause for our city team because they're really responsible. When you start with the thank yous, of course, to my family, and just, I've already said it, I can't say it enough, and, but thank you. Our city, Ms. Langley, you and I were first years at this, first year for me being mayor, first year for you really being the city manager. You've, you've filled in along, along the way, and, and I cannot tell you enough how I appreciate the friendship that we've come to have, the mentoring going kind of both ways here and there, looking at different things. And I could not think of a better city manager that I would have liked to have had along for this journey, to be right there, working alongside them. Because you rock. You absolutely rock, so. The consummate that's been there in these chambers to keep us in line and tell us, okay, you've stepped over the line, you've stepped too close to the line, or, oh, by the way, you forgot to do this, Mr. Shannon Chaffin. You've always kept us out of trouble. You've always given us options. You never tell us what to do, but you advise us, and I truly respect you for that. I think this entire council does, and it's been an honor to serve and work with you as well. Our city employees, I call it the city team because honestly, they, they work that way. Thank you. Words can't say thank you enough. You know, we try to do it as often as we can, but everything I said earlier that was here, it's because of you. You guys put in the hard work. I have never seen a team of people, and it starts at the top with Ms. Langley and goes all the way to the newest employee, that love the city like they do, will go above and beyond to make sure things are taken care of. I've never heard a city employee go, nope, can't do that. It's always, okay, how do we get it done? Or they turn around and it's just done. So with that, to all of our city team members, I just want to say you guys are rock stars in your own rights, and I truly appreciate the year of serving as mayor with you guys. The three that have basically become, because I, I, I call it cat herding because Ms. Langley is the master cat herder as the city manager wrangling the five of us. But the junior cat herders are Judy, Sierra, and George, and they are rock stars. They take care of us day in and day out. I mean, look at these chambers tonight. They're beautiful. Everything that's put together. Sierra, thank you. I was looking for Judy, and I was looking for George. I know they're here, or they were. There's Judy. She's in the back. And is George still here? Maybe? But anyway, really appreciate everything you guys do because you three keep us in check, keep us on track. I know it gets frustrating. Again, you're herding cats, but thank you for everything. Back to the council. The one thing that I've said many times, there is no me and we. And there's not a single thing that has been on any of these proclamations or accolades that hasn't taken all of us, along with our city team. So I want to say to each of you, it's been an honor to work with you guys, two of, or actually, three of you for four years, and one for two now. We've had our challenges. We've had some quite lengthy debates. And, but you know what? At the end of the day, we come out, we always do what's best for the city. So I just want to say thank you, and you guys have my utmost respect. So, thank you. The last that I want to get to is probably, well, we're going to get to the last most important group that I want to recognize, but I want to recognize, first of all, our faith-based community. You know, that's been a tie that I feel has been kind of separated for a long time. And this year, we reached out and we had Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. Wow, first time that we'd ever had that. Just wanted to get them together. We got a lot of great people doing a lot of great things, and you guys came together. And I will reiterate it today, what I've said in both of the breakfasts that we had together, is we need your help, just like we need all the nonprofits' helps and everybody else. You guys love this community just like we do, and let's come together and make Yuba City even a better place to live than it is today. I know we've got it in us, and I know you guys are there because you love your sheep. So thank you for entertaining the crazy ideas that I had this year, and thank you for your covering and prayers and your counsel, because I've met with many of you numerous times. And the last group is simply our residents, the citizens that call this place home. Most humbling thing that I've come to realize is just exactly how much of a positive impact we have in people's lives. And those are the quiet things that you see in the background. When people come up to you and tell you, you did this, and you, you've made an impact in my life for years, for days, for weeks, it's those moments that make every bit, and I'm going to be kind of slang here, but every bit of the crap that you put up with at times worth it. Because if we can make a difference in one person's life, then this city is better. So I want to thank the citizens of the city because I will tell you now that Yuba City and its residents has blessed me by being the mayor and being on this council for four years, more than I can ever put in words, more than I could ever quantify. And with that, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I say we get out of the way and get a new mayor. So, thank you. All right, let's go to Agenda Item Four, which is the Declaration of the Election Results. Ms. Sierra Wakefield, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, I am Sierra Wakefield. I'm the City Clerk Administrator and the Elections Official for the City of Yuba City. So according to California Elections Code, Section 10262B, it requires that the City Council declare elected the persons for whom the highest number of votes were cast for each office. So in this most recent election, which took place on November eighth, 2022, we had three district seats up for election. District one, we had Dave Shaw, who took sixty-four-point-eight-six percent of the vote. District two, Mark Boomgarden took forty-seven-point-nine-five percent of the vote in that district. And in District three, we had Mike Pasquale with fifty-two-point-six-one percent of the vote. In addition to the district seats this election, we had a measure on the ballot, Measure Z, which would have made both the city treasurer and the city clerk positions appointed positions as opposed to elected positions, and this particular measure did not pass overwhelmingly. The vote for both was no at over sixty-five percent. So that being said, I would like to recommend that the council adopt a resolution accepting the official certified results of the November eighth, 2022 general municipal election, with the understanding that there was an update to the resolution. The resolution that was sent out with the agenda did not include the actual official results from the county. Those came a little bit later, so an updated version has been provided in the lobby. We also have made that information available on our website. So if you do decide to move forward with the resolution, please note that it is the updated resolution, including the official results. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Wakefield. Is there any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we will open this up. Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, we will bring it back to the council for action.
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution with the aforementioned adjustments, declaring the results of the November eighth, 2022 general municipal election.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by the vice mayor, and I have a second by Councilmember Harris. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Wakefield. And with that being, resolution being passed, at this time, we are going to take a, about a two-to-three-minute recess, so don't run off, just so that we can logistically rearrange a few things. So we will be in recess for about the next three minutes. All right, we'll bring this meeting back to order. We are back in session. All right. That was an I agree, I think. All right. We will move to the next order of business, which is to the administering of the Oaths of Office. And the first oath of office will be given to council select District Two, Mark Boomgarden, if you would come down front, and your oath will be given to you tonight by former Mayor Roy Ramirez.
You're going to do this? Not the smartest guy I've ever met, but...
Oh, aye.
It's where you say your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will, well and faithfully, discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Ms. Wakefield, you have the floor.
Mr. Pasquale? I ask you to raise your right hand, please. Get after me. I state your name.
I, Michael K. Pasquale.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. And Mr. Shaw? Raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Some of us need more help than others, especially right here. So before we do any of the next stuff, we will go ahead and have comments from you councilmembers. And Councilmember Boomgarden, you have the floor.
Thank you. You're still mayor, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, first, first I want to say thanks and a good job to Dave Shaw. Those of us who've had the opportunity and the privilege to serve as a mayor understand the trials and the tribulations of that job. And Dave, I think, performed admirably. And to Susan and the family, thank you for loaning him to us. I know how much time it takes to do that, having done that previously. And I just appreciate the fellowship and the teamwork as we continue to move forward with the city. To my fellow council members, including Councilwoman Espandola, you know, this is truly a team effort, and that's what, you know, the mayor had said earlier. Nothing that we do individually is done individually. Anything that happens up here is a collective effort of all of us. We don't always agree, and that's probably a good thing, in my opinion, is that, you know, there's good decision-making made from lively discussion. And I appreciate, you know, over the last years, previous years, having that opportunity to have open and honest communication and be challenged and, you know, make better decisions because of it. My wife was here earlier. She had to leave. My sons, two of them are away at college, and the other one's, he's a farmer, and he's at an Alman Conference right now. So unfortunately, they couldn't be here. But as has been mentioned, you know, the family is the rock behind you, and I certainly appreciate their support, even though when I decided to run for reelection, I'm not sure that they were all in favor of that, but they stood by me, and I appreciate and love them for that. To the city staff, Diana Langley and the department heads and the mid-managers and all the team people, you know, nothing gets done in this city that isn't done from the ground up, really. We obviously try to help and facilitate things as councilpeople and policymakers, if you will. But as has been mentioned, you know, things that happen good in Yuba City are happening because of the employees of the City of Yuba City. And, you know, I can't tell you how much I respect them on a day-to-day basis. They just, you know, they go above and beyond the call of duty when they have to. And over the last previous four years, anyway, through the COVID and everything else, some amazing efforts just to keep the doors open and keep providing services to the citizens. So I really do appreciate that. At this point, you know, I do need to acknowledge those folks that participated and supported me through the campaign. We ran a clean campaign, and I'm extremely proud of that. You know, so much happens in politics anymore where people are, you know, casting aspersions or whatever to get forward. And my campaign team, and Crystal and Chad, you know, we made a comment, or we made an effort, a true effort, to say, hey, look, this is Mark Boomgarden. If you like him, great. If you don't, that's okay, too. And, you know, I find it as a privilege to serve this city. I served it for 30 years in the fire department. I've served it for the past four years, and I'm really looking forward for the next four years. To the voters of District 2, you know, I had an opportunity to go door-to-door. I did it all by myself. And, you know, going door-to-door and chatting with folks and finding out what their concerns, what's going well, what's not going well, those are the things that invigorate you when you go out on a campaign, because it's always good to hear about the good things, but, you know, it's not necessarily bad to hear about those things that they want to change. And, you know, poor Diana, she's going to get a little bit of a list, but we'll tackle that together, along with city staff, about some of those things that are out there that the city can do better, and we can always do better. And, you know, it's always been our effort to try to make it as good as we can make it. I'm excited for the opportunities to move the city forward. I see Supervisor Flores here. I see Supervisor Baines here. I see the sheriff here, Sheriff Barnes. I see our newly soon-to-be-appointed DA here. You know, there's a lot of positivity coming up. I hope I haven't forgotten anybody. If I have, please forgive me. But there's a lot of positivity going on the forefront here as we move forward into, you know, the next four years for me, thankfully. And I am so humbled, and I'm so, you know, honored that people felt enough confidence to allow me to represent them in District 2, Northwest Yuba City, the finest district in the city, by the way. Yeah. I spent a lot of years protecting the whole city, and I guarantee you, as I sit here today, the whole city I love. And so, but yeah, I represent District 2, so don't forget that. You know, and, you know, I'm just excited. I'm excited to work again with this council. You know, Mike, we don't know each other that well, but your portfolio is good, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to work with you and join with us as we continue to move forward. Mayor Kirchner, I'm not going to get much to say afterwards, but I'm going to say it now. Congratulations, and I look forward to supporting you in every way. Vice Mayor Harris, same thing. Had that opportunity now to work with you for a lot of years, and I do appreciate that. At this point, I just want to say thanks and wrap up my comments. Really, a heartfelt thanks to everybody for being here tonight and celebrating this with us. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next comments will be from our newest member, Councilmember Ms. Wally.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know where to start. New chapter in the big adventure of Michael Pasquale. My wife, I bring home some things home, and she just kind of looks at me like, what do you want to do? And so with that, she allows me to do that. And thank you, Steph. I appreciate that. And all the people that have been so special in my life are here tonight, so I do get emotional. This has been my home my whole life, and I want to get back and make it better. These gentlemen have done a terrific job of moving that forward. I can't say enough about this staff. I've been around a lot of different staffs, and this by far is the most inviting, most open group of individuals. And I know most of them because of what my wife and I have done for the last, oh, 18 years, almost 30 now, educating their children. And it was funny, earlier in one of my tours, one of the staff members came around the corner and monitored me with the "Hello, Uncle Mike," which that's what I'm known as at the school. I'm Uncle Mike to children, parents, and grandparents, uncles, aunts. And I know almost everyone, someone in every one of these departments at this city. And I look forward to working with a great group of people. And these gentlemen have definitely going to put me to the test and make me work even harder. And you have got my guarantee that I will give you everything I have at this position. And I thank all of you. Above all, the people that put their trust in me and voted me in. I can't say enough about that. That is humbling at best. So thank you all, and let's get to work.
Let's back to me. I feel like I've already spoken enough tonight, so I'm going to try to make this real brief. First is Honey, I guess. Sorry, CAT scan didn't come back yet. We'll get those results after tonight. So, you know, thank you for standing behind me when it was, we looked at it, we talked earlier about those moments that you make in different people's lives. That was at the root of our decision to finish the course and go one more term of four years and see if the people wanted us. So I appreciate you for being behind me. Crystal, you're not only my friend, you're, as far as I'm concerned, you're the best political consultant in this entire region. And, you know, to what Mark said, you know, been through two campaigns and, you know, keep it above the fray. And we went through a lot year one, and then found out some interesting things about myself even this time with, that I'm not in the community and stuff, but, you know, we kept it above the line. And so thank you for toeing the line with me and getting me through these last two elections. And to your family as well, because the whole package deal comes. Our city team, our city staff stuff, let's go get the job done. We got a lot started in four years through COVID. Let's just keep up the good work. And as I told Ms. Langley when I became mayor a year ago, this extends to all five of us. Tell us how to stay out of your way so that we can do what we do, and you guys can keep rocking. So thank you again for everything you do. Let's keep looking forward, you know? There's a lot of things on the horizon, working with our colleagues. Supervisor Baines, looking forward to you being the new chair over at Center County. My apologies to you guys, because I didn't do it earlier, but Supervisor Flores is here. Former Mayor Roy Ramirez is here, who you've already met. So thank you, guys, for being here. New incoming District Attorney Jen Dupree, you're going to rock it, girl. You really are. So Brandon, my brother, thank you for being here tonight as well. So with that, I've already said it the first time. We've got a lot of work to do, and as Mike said, let's get it done. And I'm going to leave you with one final thought, and I stole this from Mako the other night, who's Colonel Church out at the base. He got a quote from a very patriotic Marvel character. "No amount of money can buy time." That was Tony Stark. And I want to thank the people that worked with me on my campaign. Some are here tonight, some are at home, some will be watching. No amount of money can replace any amount of time, and they all came alongside, gave a little bit here and a little bit there. And there's several in the room. I see several people all over. Thank you, because your investment in me, you know, I really cherish that and respect it. And to the residents of District 1, spent a lot of time on the doors, just like Mark did. Laundry list has been trickling in, but we're going to take care of the whole city, not just a district at a time. And I know we were suggesting earlier, because District 1 is the best. No, but we've got a job to do for the whole city, so I'm honored and humbled to serve another four-year term, so thank you. Now, let's get on with business, the election of the new mayor. You know, do we have any comments from the public on the election of the new mayor? Sure, nobody's got anything to say. All right, going once, twice, I hear get or done. We will bring this back to the council for nominations. Do we have anybody that might want to already have their name on a jacket or anything yet?
Through the mayor, I would humbly nominate Mr. Kirchner to be our new mayor of Yuba City.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Harris. I have a second by Councilmember Boomgarden. First of all, Mr. Kirchner, do you accept this nomination?
I do.
Oh, boy.
Oh, yeah. Did you check with your wife first?
I did.
All right. With that, all those in favor of Vice Mayor Kirchner becoming the next mayor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It's yours, my friend. Congratulations.
Thank you for that, Dave. So at this point, we're, it looks like we're going to need a new vice mayor. Do we have any, in the, do you have any comments from the public on this item, the election of a vice mayor of Yuba City? Seeing none? I'll open up the nominations for a vice mayor.
Through the mayor, I'd like to nominate Sean Harris as vice mayor, please.
I have a motion. And a second. All those in favor of Councilman Harris being a new vice mayor of Yuba City?
You're going to get your first introduction to our city attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Make sure, if you would please, that Councilmember Harris accepts the nomination.
Councilmember Harris, do you accept the nomination for vice mayor of Yuba City?
I proudly do. Thank you.
Okay. We have a nomination and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes have, any objections? Ayes have it. At this point, it looks like we're going to begin with comments from our new vice mayor, Sean Harris.
That was quick. Well, thank you all very much. You know, this is, we're getting ready to begin the, what, the seventh year of my eight-year run up here at this dais, and it is a very humbling experience. And it's a, more importantly, it's an honor to serve our city, my hometown, many of our hometown. And it's already been said today, but I cannot pass up the opportunity to make comments without acknowledging our city staff. It's so, and we're not just saying that to fill time. They are awesome. We cannot, would not, ever be able to do our job anywhere near as effectively, or at all, if it wasn't for them. all, if it wasn't for them and the team that Diana leads and everybody. They're all in here. I could go down the list forever. Back, that back corner right there is a powerhouse of professionalism, and where's Sam? You know, there he is, right there. But anyway, and all their staff, everyone is just awesome, and I just so appreciate that. And I do the very best I can to not add more to your plate, because I know you have a lot more even than you tell us that you have. So I appreciate that. My, the fellow council up here, we've gone through a lot, thick and thin, very difficult times, very challenging times, time management, jockeying schedules, covering all the events and the functions that we go to, and most importantly, the work that we do. It's awesome to be a part of it, and I thank you all for that. Mike, welcome. Stand by. It's gonna be great. It's gonna be great. So that's really pretty much it. You know, we're rotating, we rotate through these positions, and I think it's, I support that system. And to have such a large showing of faces in our community show up today to be a part of this transition, which is part of what makes America special, there's not a shot fired, right? You know, but, you know, it's great. You know, we have all these faces here, Mr. Former Mayor Roy Ramirez, our sheriff, Jen, Manny, former council member, vice mayor, all of the city staff. Everybody is here today to support us and be there, and I'm gonna forget somebody, probably already have. But it just really means a lot that people take time out of their evening to show and demonstrate by their presence the importance of this moment. And what we're going to do, we're going to become a team. We're gonna work together. We know each other quite a bit well already. Mike, as I said, is gonna bring, we're gonna bring you on board, and looking forward to tapping your knowledge and your experience and your expertise for why, to make Yuba City better. Not any one of us, but all of you and our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harris. I've always wanted to say that. That sounds cool. Let's get used to it. So I do have a few notes that I've written down, but before I get into these, I would like to thank the community coming out in full force tonight to support this event. Friends, community, family, thank you so much, especially my wife, Lisa, my son Jack, my father, brothers, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, thank you very much for taking the time to be here. So I've had a few, I've had a little bit of time to think about this, what I was gonna say if and when I became the mayor, and I kept going back to why, why? And some of you might be old enough to remember way back in the year 1986, there was a place rated almanac that was produced by a company called Rand McNally. And back then, we were a city of only 18,000 residents. And I happened to be a senior in high school back then, and this almanac listed all 329 metropolitan areas to live in the United States. And according to their research, Yuba City came in 329, dead last. I took exception to this, and I actually, this is a true story, I actually went down to San Francisco to talk to them about that. I was down there with my mother, and they felt bad enough that they actually gave me an almanac and sent me home. But I still have that almanac, but I think somewhere along the line that was, it was instilled in me that, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can do better. So we fast forward to 2022. Now we have a city of close to 75,000 residents. Yuba City has established itself as a place to work, to invest in, to recreate, and to visit, a place to call home. I'm amazed at what my hometown has become. We host an annual parade that attracts over 100,000 people. Just across the street from City Hall, we have a beautiful temple to the Church of Jesus Christ, Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints being built. A new development seems to be everywhere. It feels like this city has a ribbon-cutting every week. I'm asked all the time, what's it like to be on city council? It's exciting. It's exciting. COVID was brutal, but this city has come through revitalized. The future is bright. It has been my privilege to work with my learned colleagues and for an amazing city staff. These are the men and women that keep us safe at night, keep the water and power on, and do all the things to keep a city running smoothly. For the record, I would like to wish and thank Ms. Grace Bestendola all the best. I know that she will continue to do great things for this community. I would like to congratulate Councilman Shaw and Councilman Boomgarden on being the first candidates elected in their respective districts. I know you will continue to do the good work. Councilmember Pascuali, I pronounced that right. I look forward to working with you, and I know you will represent District Three well. Just some words of advice, when speaking at the dais, remember, more isn't always better. Sometimes it's what you don't say that is more powerful than what you do. If someone approaches you after a meeting and says, you need to talk more, that means you're doing it right. Always go with your gut, especially if you're in the minority, and even if you're the only For me, my priorities have not changed. Number one, public safety and making sure our first responders have the tools to be successful in their day-to-day jobs is paramount, paramount. Number two, being fiscally responsible, prioritizing programs and projects, and spending the public's money wisely. And number three, addressing the homelessness issue. I was corrected by a member in our community while I was campaigning. She said, Wade, stop telling people that you're gonna solve the issue. You're not. It's what you do to address the issue. Our professionals that work with the homeless population are telling us that the issue is what it is all over the State of California, and that is affordable housing. Lastly, as we transition to districts, I'm reminded what, of what Jim, excuse me, Senator Jim Nielsen said at his retirement. These are not our districts. Don't ever say my district. We are the recently elected custodians of those districts. And finally, this campaign season has been particularly difficult for our community. We were made painfully aware how temporary and fragile this life is. I think if my friend Eric was here, he would encourage everyone to work and make the community better than we've, than how we felt it. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.